Let's open up with item A, called order.
We received advanced notification that Director Reyes would be absent this evening. Director Yearwood?
Here.
Secretary Lineback?
Here.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Here.
Chair Danzel?
Here.
If you would all please stand and face the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the free public, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Board disclosures. Does any board member have anything they need to disclose on any action items for this evening before we start? Hearing none. Approval of the agenda. I have a motion by Vice Chair Sloan. Do I hear a second?
I'm sorry. Prior to the approval of the agenda, we have one change. There's been a correction to pages thirty-one through thirty-two, which is public hearing item E3A, and that changed document has been left for you there at the dais.
Thank you. Do I have? I haven't. Do I have an approval with the amended agenda?
Yes, I will move it with the amended agenda.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Sloan. Do I hear a second? Second by Secretary Lineback. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any knows? Hearing none. Motion passes. Item B, comments by public on non-agenda items.
Thank you, Chair Danzel. Comments by the public on non-agenda items. Members of the public may address the board on district topics not listed on this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. It is a violation of state law for the board to discuss or take action on non-agenda items. Board members may only briefly ask clarifying questions or refer the matter to staff.
Thank you. Clerk, do we have any cards this evening?
Yes, we have one card. I'd like to invite Mr. Dan Lynch to the podium, please.
Good evening, Mr. Lynch. Just to remind you, at the one-minute mark, I will give you one minute, and I will give you also a thirty-second if you do happen to go that long.
Great. We'll keep it short. Again, my name's Dan Lynch, Rensh Cordova, resident for twenty-five years. I live adjacent to a CRPD park. Five years of involvement with the Blue Marlins, and my daughter's a lifeguard. So, I really appreciate what you guys bring to the table. Lots of involvement, and I know that CRPD brings a lot to the community, and my family specifically appreciates that as well. I'm sure you guys have seen the postcards that were sent by the Blue Marlins. We had a great effort. Those were sent not only to you, but also to the city council, and I think they were received well. There was a lot of work put into them, both young and old, and I hope it underscores the value that the Hagan Pool does have to us. That was certainly the intent. We want to support the effort of renovating the pool however we can. I know there's issues with funding right now. Sorry to hear that the Measure H funding did not go through. I know that the city has funds, according to Donald Terry and Dan Scoglan, that are available. We work together, so I want to certainly encourage that. I guess one of my requests is, hey, if we're not, if we're not going to, you know, go full forward right now, I know that the website said we started the renovation two weeks early. I'm not sure what that really meant, but what I'd like to see is if we're not going to go for a full renovation, I'd certainly like to suggest, let's get the competition pool back online, let's do some maintenance, and let's get it back online for the 2016 season, and then move forward. So, I'll bring that to the, what I just learned about, the forum up and coming. Don't know if that's been considered or not, but again, we, the Marlins and the community, just ask that you exhaust all efforts to get this back online, because we really appreciate it. Okay? Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Administrator Robins, will you update us on this project, please?
Yes, when we get to the district administrator's report, I'll be happy to give the board an update on where we stand with the project.
Great. Thank you, sir. Any other cards tonight? Ms. Jones?
No further cards.
Thank you. Consent calendar. Administrator Robins.
Thank you, Chair Danzel. Tonight, on the consent calendar, we have two items. Once again, consent items are considered routine and are intended to be acted upon in one motion without discussion. During this portion of the meeting, the consent calendar will be read aloud. Prior to approval, the chairperson will give the board, staff, and public the opportunity to pull any item for discussion. The remaining calendar will be acted upon. Any pulled items will then be heard and acted upon individually. Item C1 is to approve minutes of the meeting of the board of directors on July eighth, sorry, excuse me, July eighth, two thousand and fifteen. Item C2 is a resolution, and that's to adopt Resolution fifteen backslash sixteen dash four, and ratify payroll for July two thousand and fifteen in a total of three hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Thank you. Is there any public that would like to pull either of these consent calendar items? Any staff that would like to pull any? Any board members that would like to pull any? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion?
I move approval of the consent calendar.
I have a motion by Secretary Lineback. Do I hear, or I have a motion by? Do I have a second? I have a second by Vice Chair Sloan. Roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Lineback?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Director Reyes is absent.
Thank you. Motion passes. Let's go on to item D. Standing committee reports. There are none for this evening. Item E, public hearings.
Thank you once again, Chair Danzel and board. This evening, as the board may be aware, we are in the last stages of our budget approval going forward with the county, and as such, we have a number of items, although we have three resolution items, they have a number of subparts that we will be walking through this evening. So, I will ask that both the board and the public bear with us as we move through this agenda. Item E1 is a resolution to adopt Resolution fifteen backslash sixteen dash five, approving the engineer's report confirming diagram and assessment and ordering the levying assessment of fiscal year two thousand and fifteen sixteen for the Independence at Mather Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing at six-thirty-seven. Staff to present the item. With that, I'll introduce Mr. Goodell.
Good evening. Matt Goodell, Finance Director for the district. Yeah, this is a public hearing for the Independence at Mather Landscaping and Lighting District for the two thousand and fifteen sixteen year. We did have a small increase of the three percent that brought the total annual assessment to one hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-eight cents. The purpose of this fund is to provide maintenance services for the parks located with the, within that Independence at Mather boundary for Veterans Park and Independence Park, and that's all staff has.
Thank you, Mr. Goodell. I'd like to invite the public to comment on this, if there is any. I'd like to, at this time, hearing none, close pub, close public hearing at six-thirty-eight. Are there any questions from the board? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion?
Chair Danzel?
Yes, ma'am.
I had a note regarding having Mr. Joe Francisco address the board on this item.
Thank you. So, do I need to reopen this public hearing? Okay. Hey, Minister Francisco, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Was I, is there a question?
I believe the question was about the original election process for this LLD, and if it could possibly be challenged in the future.
Okay. It was probably done by the developer, so it was approved by the developer, one vote, and it can be challenged in the future. If the electorate were to challenge the district, then they could, they could, if they had two-thirds registered voter support to challenge it, they could.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so I guess I can go back, and is the, do I hear a motion to approve item E1?
I move the board of directors adopt Resolution fifteen backslash sixteen dash five, approving the engineer's report confirming diagram and assessments and ordering levy of assessments for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen sixteen for the Independence at Mather Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor from Director Yearwood. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second by Vice Chair Sloan. Roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Lineback?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Director Reyes is absent.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item E2.
Item E2 is to adopt Resolution fifteen backslash sixteen dash six, approving engineer's report confirming diagram and assessment and ordering levy of assessment for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen sixteen for the Cordova Recreation and Park District, Park Maintenance and Recreation Improvement District.
I will be opening this, this public hearing at six-forty-one. Staff to present item.
Sure, I'll present. Again, Matt Goodell, Finance Director. This levy tax is for the area of Gold River, City Ranch of Cordova, Larchmont, and Rosemont area. It's an assessment for each household annually at the rate of twenty-four dollars and fifty-six cents. Last year, there was a charge of twenty-three dollars and thirty-two cents, so it increased a small amount. Total revenue from the thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-three homes located within this area is nine hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty cents. All funds are used for operational park maintenance services.
Thank you, Mr. Goodell. And I would like to, at this time, invite the public to comment, if there is any. Hearing none, I will be closing this public hearing at six-forty-one. Are there any questions from the board? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion?
I move that the board adopt Resolution fifteen slash sixteen dash six, approving engineer's report confirming diagram and assessment and ordering levy of assessment for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen sixteen for the Cordova Recreation and Park District, Park Maintenance and Recreation Improvement District.
Thank you. I have a motion by Secretary Lineback. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Director Yearwood. Roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Lineback?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Director Reyes is absent.
Thank you. Motion E2 passes. Item E3. Yes, microphone.
Item E3 is to adopt final budgets for the Cordova Recreation and Park District fiscal year two thousand and fifteen sixteen. I do believe Mr. Goodell has a comprehensive, comprehensive presentation for you.
I apologize. Public hearings for this, right? Correct? Okay. So, we need to open each one individually? Okay.
Yes. So, I guess I do need to open.
And then I'll present each one individually.
I apologize. Please. We'll be opening this public hearing at six-forty-three. Present item by staff. Thank you, Mr. Goodell.
All right, tonight? Tonight, thank you, marks the completion of the whole budget process. It's one that we start in January. It's a lengthy process, involves a lot of people, and I appreciate staff and management, and of course, board for all the workshops and preliminary hearings and, and stuff that we had to go through to get to this point, but tonight marks the final budget presentation. And the first one that we have is our lovely board members up above there. We have ten, and the first one that we have is the general fund. We presented the preliminary budget, and the revenue did not change. We start with the projections for revenue back in March and April, and believe that these are the amounts that we are going to receive for the following year. So, the five million, seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars is what we believe will be the revenue for the general fund. The major one being our property tax at about three-point-six million, and then recreation bringing in about one-point-six-eight-six million. And then we have some other leasing and cost recovery and other methods that we receive funds for the general fund. We did have some minor changes from the preliminary budget. Preliminary, we had one-point-eight million for full-time employees. There were a couple of shifts in staff that created a twenty-two thousand dollar increase, bringing it to one-point-eight, thirty-five, seven-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars total. Part-time staff, there were no changes or requests, so that remains at seven-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, one eighteen. Benefits and taxes actually were reduced by twenty-eight thousand dollars from our preliminary figure, and that's due to some reclassification of workers' comp. We were able to reclassify certain positions into a different category after coordinating with our workers' comp auditor, and so that reduced that benefit and tax. And then service and supplies, we had some minor changes that brought it up, another seventeen thousand dollars that incorporated into the budget. It's a total of one million, three hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight forty. So, our total expenditures is five million, one hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and six dollars. We also have some transfers that have to take place as part of our overall budget, and again, we had six hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight originally in our preliminary budget. There was a minor change in our payments for a lawnmower lease. I had a placeholder there for sixteen thousand. The actual amount going for our large mower lease is nineteen thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars. So, we had to add three thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars to our debt service transfer. Otherwise, our, our almost twenty percent match for PMR IDs is still the same. Our match to the villages of Zimfandel is still the same, and a little bit to cover a project from the general fund for fifty-six thousand, seven hundred is the same. So, those totals for the five-point-one million in expenditures, and then our six hundred and ninety-three thousand dollar transfer is the five-point-eight million that we have dedicated for the budget requirements for general fund. And that's what I have for my presentation for the general fund.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to invite the public to comment, if there is any. Hearing none, I will be closing this public hearing at six-forty-seven. Are there any questions from the board?
I have a question.
Vice Chair Sloan.
Matt, I'm just curious, and just for the record, I'd like to know, on line item two-five-nine-one, page thirty-one, and on the rest of the packet, we talk about other professional services. I just want to get the definition from you, what that actually encompasses, because it's, that besides water is the largest ticket number on here.
Correct. Yeah, and our, to address the second part, our park services is working with our water companies. We have three of them that we deal with, and a water scheduling plan that we think will have a reduction in cost even, not only use, but also cost. So, we feel that we're very comfortable with that number. As you are aware, in years past, I've been concerned about that, because that was our most, largest expense, and so we feel we have control with the drought situation that, what that cost will be. The other professional services are lumped with multiple consultants. Our auditing services is part of that amount. Our legal services is part of that amount, and then our park services and recreation and the planning departments, they consult with engineers, with tree trimming contracts, with landscape maintenance, and animal damage control, our security contracts. So, any contracts that we have, we put into this category.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Is there any other questions from the board? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion?
I move the board of directors adopt Resolution fifteen slash sixteen dash seven, and approve the final budget for the Cordova Recreation and Park District General Fund three-four-seven A for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen sixteen, and authorize the district administrator to file with the county auditor controller.
I have a motion on the floor from Director Yearwood. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second by Secretary Lineback. All those in favor, roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Lineback?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Director Reyes is absent.
Motion passes. Item E3B.
Thank you, Chair Danzel. Item B is to adopt Resolution fifteen backslash sixteen dash eight, and approve the final budget for the Independence at Mather Landscaping and Lighting District three-four-seven B for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen sixteen, and authorize the district administrator to file with the county auditor controller.
I'll be opening this public hearing at six-forty-nine. Mr. Goodell?
Chair Danzel. So, this Landscape and Lightning District was established in two thousand. The purpose of it was for landscape and maintenance services, pays for labor, contractual services, our utility costs, services, and supplies, and materials. There are two parks located within this boundary, Independence Park and Veterans Park, and the budget for this year, our preliminary was, we had one thousand, two hundred and seventy-one homes. We still have one thousand, two hundred and seventy-one homes. Our rate hasn't changed per house. It's a hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighteen cents, and our overall revenue budget brings in one hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred dollars, same, same as the preliminary budget. And again, our expenditures for this particular fund did not change as well. These two parks represent five percent of our, of our overall park services budget, and equate to salaries of eighty-five thousand, eight ninety-two, services, supplies at a hundred and six thousand, one ninety-six, for a total budget of one hundred and ninety-two thousand and eighty-eight dollars. There's no need for a general fund subsidized. This fund services itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goodell. I'd like to invite the public to comment, if there is any. Hearing none, I would like to close this public hearing at six-fifty-one. Are there any questions from the board? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion. I move that we adopt Resolution fifteen slash sixteen dash eight, and approve the final budget for the Independence at Mather Landscaping and Lighting District three-four-seven B for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen slash sixteen, and authorize the district administrator to file with the county auditor controller.
I have a motion on the floor from Vice Chair Sloan. Do I hear a second? I have a second by Secretary Lineback. Roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Lineback?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Director Reyes is absent.
Motion passes. Item E3C.
Yes, item C is to adopt Resolution fifteen backslash sixteen dash nine, and approve the final budget for the Villages of Zimfandel Community Facility District, CFD number zero-one dash zero-one-three-four-C, for the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen sixteen, and authorize the district administrator to file with the county auditor controller.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing at six-fifty-two. Mr. Goodell?
Okay, this Community Facilities District is located in the Villages of Zimfandel area. It was established in two thousand and one, includes parks, medians, bike paths, and sound walls, pays for landscaping, maintenance, and graffiti removal, and covers park services, labor, contractual services, and again, services, supplies, materials, and utility costs associated with this area. There are six parks located in this area, with the one coming online at Cobblestone hopefully this year, and also some bike trails and streetscapes throughout the area. We do have some modifications from the preliminary budget. We anticipated two thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight homes. There's construction in this area around the Cobblestone Park area, and so a hundred and twenty-two homes came online, and so we were able to tax levy two thousand, two hundred and eighty homes within this area. There was a small rate decrease based off our preliminary numbers to a final number of three-ten, fifty per house, and that additional revenue brings forty-three thousand dollars, two hundred and thirty-three, forty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars, which is much needed in this area, for a total of eight hundred and seven thousand, two thirty-three. On the expenditure side, nothing's changed. Cobblestone's not online yet, so we're anticipating just a twenty-five percent of the overall park services budget, equating to three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six fifty in salaries, and four hundred and ninety-one thousand, six fifty in services, supplies. Again, the amount for expenditures is higher than the revenue, and so we still have to do a transfer from the general fund. The original difference was a hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred. I left that amount the same. Again, these are estimated and budgeted, hoping that we don't have to use the full transfer. A transfer will take place at the end, and I'm hoping that we'll have a forty to fifty thousand dollar savings that can remain in the general fund at the end of the year. So, that's the target. And that's my presentation.
I told Mr. Goodell I'd probably jump in here a little bit on this item, only because as, as three of our board members know, we've been challenged in the VOZ historically on funding, and one of the discussions we had a year or so ago, maybe a little longer, was about the potential of trying to increase revenues from VOZ, and we did that with an understanding of, we don't know when, when it'll, when development will pick up again. The good news here is, if development stays steady at, you know, a constant somewhere around fifty to a hundred homes until they fill out, and I think there's about seven hundred and thirty-five total units still available to be built in this area, somewhere in that area, we actually will resolve, I believe, our funding issues, even though we're building an additional park. Cobblestone, I believe, is in this area. Where's my?
Correct.
Where's, thank you. The overall revenues coming in would be able to support the additional property as well as the shortfall that we see in VOZ at this time. So, I just wanted to make sure that the board members were aware of that, that we're still managing this process, and the hope is not to have to go back out to the public for some augmentation of this, that we can get to a point where it balances out.
Thank you, Administrator Robins. At this time, I'd like to invite the public to comment, if there is any. Hearing none, I'd like to close this public hearing at six-fifty-five. Are there any questions from the board?
So, why, why did the, oh, I'm sorry. Why did the rate decrease? Was that just an overprediction on our part, or did something happen where it actually went down?
It takes into account either three percent or CPI, and the final numbers are presented by the engineer, and so we come up with the calculation, and then they come up with the final calculation, and that's the one we go with.
Okay. Just wondering. Saving myself fifty cents, so.
Correct. Forty-eight cents.
Well, I rounded up.
Don't ask the, don't ask the accountant to round up. That's not a good thing. He'll take advantage of it. Okay, hearing no other questions from the board. Do I hear a motion?
I move the board of directors adopt Resolution fifteen slash sixteen dash nine, and approve the final budget for the Villages of Zimfandel Community Facilities District, CFD number zero-one dash zero-one-three-four-seven-C, for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen sixteen, and authorize the district administrator to file with the county auditor controller.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor by Director Yearwood. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second by Vice Chair Sloan. Roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Lineback?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Director Reyes is absent.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item E3D.
Thank you, Chair Danzel. Item D is to adopt Resolution fifteen backslash sixteen dash ten, and approve the final budget for the shooting center.
Center Capital Improvement Fund, 347D, for fiscal year 2015-16, and authorize the district administrator to file with the county auditor controller.
Thank you. I'd like to open this public hearing at 18, or at 6:57. Mr. Caddell?
Okay, this is for our Shooting Center Let Abatement Improvement Fund. What we receive is $5 per customer shooter, per user, and that money is split two ways. $2 of it goes towards the improvements, capital improvements of the facility, and $3 to our general fund recreation fund. For this particular fund, 347D, we retain the improvement funds here, and we anticipate about $65,000 in revenue. We are going to initiate a let abatement project in a certain area at the facility, and those costs for this upcoming year are going to start at $21,000, so we're going to budget for that immediately. And that's it. It's the same as the preliminary report, no changes.
Thank you, Mr. Caddell. I'd like to invite the public to comment at this time. Hearing none, I will be closing this public hearing at 6:58. Are there any questions from the board? Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
I move the Board of Directors adopt Resolution 15/16-10 and approve the final budget for the Shooting Center Capital Improvements Fund, 347D, for fiscal year 2015-16, and authorize the district administrator to file with the county auditor controller.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor by Secretary Lineback. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second by Vice Chair Sloan. Roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Lineback?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Director Reyes is absent.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item E3E.
Yes, item E is to adopt Resolution 15/16-11 and approve the final budget for the Sunridge Community Facilities District, CFD #04-01347E, for fiscal year 2015-16, and authorize the district administrator to file with the county auditor controller.
I'll be opening this public hearing at 7:00 PM. Mr. Caddell?
Okay, this is for our Sunridge Anatolia Community Facilities District. It was established in 2004. It includes the maintenance of parks, medians, bike paths, and sound walls, detention ponds, and drainage facilities, and of course, all landscaping, maintenance, and graffiti removal. Pays for park services, labor, contractual services, service supplies, materials, and all the utility costs. There are five parks currently within this area, and we have two coming online very soon, in Heron Landing Community Park and the Hillside Park. Also includes bike trails and streetscapes. There weren't any change in the family residential units. There's still 4,436 homes. There was, again, a small reduction in the estimated amount of 56 cents, bringing the fee to $375.59 per house. Now, we do show an increase in revenue of $9,047, and the reason why, there's additional properties that are developed, undeveloped, large lot, vacant, and commercial, not just the family residential units that are involved here. That information is lumped in together with the revenue. It's a small portion, and the main revenue source, of course, comes from the residential units that are listed here. But that's the reason why, there's a change in the commercial and other developed used land that brought a little bit of additional revenue. So our total final budget for revenue is $1,701,487 for this area. It represents 40% of our park services budget, so there are $636,240 in salaries, $786,640 in service and supplies, for a total final budget of $1,422,880. There are some transfers included this year. $2 million will be coming from this fund. There is a fund balance available that will be transferred from that for the $2 million. Cavala Ranch Park has a project. We originally had $12,200 earmarked for this. That's our costs. SMUD is going to reimburse us $35,000, but it's a reimbursement grant, so we have to pay for those funds in advance. Therefore, I need to budget for the full amount of the $47,200. But we'll include that $35,000 as a revenue item, as a reimbursement item. So total transfer for this year will be $2,47,200. Our budget requirement for the transfers, cost, and salaries is $3,448,152. And that is my presentation for Sunridge.
Thank you, Mr. Caddell. At this time, I'd like to invite the public to comment if there is any. Hearing none, I will be closing this public hearing at 7:03. Are there any questions from the board? Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion. I move that we adopt Resolution 15/16-11 and adopt and approve the final budget for the Sunridge Community Facility District, CFD #04-01, print is 347E, for fiscal year 2015-16, and authorize the district administrator to file with the county auditor controller.
I have a motion on the floor from Vice Chair Sloan. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Director Yearwood. Roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Lineback?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Director Reyes is absent.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item E3F.
Thank you, Chair Danzel. Item F is to adopt Resolution 15/16-12 and approve the final budget for the Cordova Golf Course, 347F, for fiscal year 2015-16, and authorize the district administrator to file with the county auditor controller.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing at 7:04. Mr. Caddell?
Thank you. The expenditures from the preliminary to final have not changed. They're still the same. These are salaries for our golf pro shop range attendants for our park services at the golf course. And the services and supplies to maintain the golf course has not changed as well. Equipment transfers for new and current leases at $49,800, and then resale purchases for our pro shop still remains at $30,000, for a total of $978,824 required. Our revenues have changed. We had to increase our revenues to $1,420,000 from our original $980,000 from the preliminary. And the reason why is we're starting the year at a small deficit. We have a $62,000 fund deficit in this fund that we have to address. And this is the reason why earlier on, a couple months ago, I brought forth a reason that we had to increase our rates. And so I'm hoping that that additional amount will handle that deficit. We went through the exercise of trying to find room in the expenditures, and there is a contingency fund that we could use there if need be, if our revenues don't match. But I'm guessing based off of the past month that we'll be able to reach that fund balance and then some. So I put it on as other. I didn't attach it to the other revenue accounts, just so we could address it separately and see what happens. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Caddell. At this point, I'd like to invite the public to comment if there is any. Hearing none, I will be closing this public hearing at 7:06 PM. Are there any questions from the board? Mr. Caddell? Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion. I move the Board of Directors adopt Resolution 15/16-12 and approve the final budget for the Cordova Golf Course, 347F, for the fiscal year 2015-16, and authorize the district administrator to file with the county auditor controller.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor from Director Yearwood. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second by Vice Chair Sloan. Roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Lineback?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Director Reyes is absent.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item E3G.
Yes, item G is to adopt Resolution 15/16-13 and approve the final budget for the Capital Improvements Project, 347G, for fiscal year 2015-16, and authorize the district administrator to file with the county auditor controller.
Thank you, Administrator Rhodes. At this time, I will be opening the public hearing at 7:07. Mr. Caddell?
All right, so this is our Capital Improvement Project Fund. Of course, everyone on their mind has the Hagan Community Aquatic Center at the front of their minds, and hopefully that's something that we can get to in the very, very near future. But this fund was designated to provide what our major projects are going to happen in the following year, to establish what those budgets are and the timelines, and then, of course, to attach what those funding sources are. For this year, there are four particular projects on the books. We have the Heron Landing Park taking place at $9,433,400. That's the same as that we had in the preliminary. Again, the Shooting Center at $21,000. Cavala Ranch Park, originally was $12,200, but as stated prior, we had to add $35,000 in cost for a total of $47,200, which we'll get reimbursed back. Cobblestone Park is a turnkey park, one that'll be built by the developers group, so zero cost to us. And then a transfer of $29,400 from the golf course for equipment lease that we have Again, what's important is the other side of that, what our fund sources are. And we're receiving $7.3 million for the Heron Landing Park from Impact Fee Fund, $2 million from the capital, from the fund balance that we have in Sunridge, a small portion from the general fund of $56,000, our golf course revenue for the equipment, Shooting Center, Fund 347D for the $21,000, and then again, from Sunridge, $47,200 for the Cavala lighting project. So both those balance for the full Capital Improvement Project Fund for $7,376,700. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caddell. At this time, I'd like to invite the public to comment if there is any. Hearing none, I will be closing this public hearing at 7:09 PM. Are there any questions from the board? Secretary Lineback?
Yeah, I'm wondering about the maintenance of the pool. I mean, in our board package later on, under planning, we have an item that says that we're going to be putting together an RFP and going for a million two in renovations at least, right? Maintenance updates.
Right. And I know Jim, Administrator Rhodes, will probably speak more about this, but at this stage, we weren't prepared to incorporate that in our budget. When we bring forth that RFP, we will also bring a budget amendment and what that funding source and where it's coming from to fund that particular phase of the pool project.
Okay. Thank you.
Currently, right now, those funds are sitting in the general fund and are, although they sit there and add to the total, what looks like very, very healthy fund balance. That fund balance minus 1.2 is about a little over $400,000 right now. So they're sitting there waiting to be assigned. We didn't have a specific number for that and left it off this list as such.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions at this time? Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution 15/16-13 and approve the final budget for the Capital Improvement Project Fund, 347G, for fiscal year 2015-16, and authorize the district administrator to file with the county auditor controller.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor by Secretary Lineback. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second by Vice Chair Sloan. Roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Lineback?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Director Reyes is absent.
Thank you. Let's move on to item E3H.
Thank you, Chair Danzel. Item H is to adopt Resolution 15/16-14 and approve the final budget for the Debt Service Fund, 347H, for fiscal year 2015-16, and authorize the district administrator to file with the county auditor controller.
Thank you. We'll be opening this public hearing at 7:11. Mr. Caddell?
All right, what we have in front are three major loans and leases that we currently have. They are the Mather Sports Center that established in 2008. It's a 20-year loan that we pay semi-annually, two payments. The original loan amount with interest is 6.1 million. We've paid 2.3 million to date, and our two payments total 309,000 annually. And so after this year, we'll have a remaining balance of 3.5 million. We also have an easy-go golf cart lease for four years. It started in 2012 for 20 golf carts. It totaled $84,000, about $4,000 a cart. And we've paid $52,550 to date. We'll pay another $20,000 this year, and we'll have a $10,500 balance for the following final year. We also did a five-year lease on a large mower in 2012. The cost was $97,000. We've paid $49,000 to date, and our current payment will be $19,212. And we'll have $47,530 remaining, and the total's below. And that is our debt service fund for this year.
Thank you, Mr. Caddell. At this time, I'd like to invite the public to comment if there is any. Hearing none, I'd like to close this public hearing at 7:13. Are there any questions from the board? Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion. I move that we adopt Resolution 15/16-14 and approve the fiscal budget for the Debt Service Fund, 347H, for fiscal year 2015-16, and authorize the district administrator to file with the county auditor controller.
We have a motion on the floor by Vice Chair Sloan. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Director Yearwood. Roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Lineback?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Director Reyes is absent.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item E3I.
Yes, item I is to adopt Resolution 15/16-15 and approve the final budget for the Montalena Community Facilities District, 347J, for fiscal year 2015-16, and authorize the district administrator to file with the county auditor controller.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing at 7:14. Mr. Caddell?
So this is for the Montalena Community Facilities District. We are not levying the tax this year, so I'll explain what's going on here. This was established last year in 2014 for parks, medians, bike paths, sound walls, detention ponds, drainage facilities, and for landscaping and maintenance. For our park services department, it will bring in about $57,000 a year, which is exactly what we received in 2014. There are no homes in there. It's not developed. There's no construction going on, and we're still unsure exactly when construction is going to take place, definitely not in the next year. So zero homes. Our rate that we have on the books and agreed upon is $371.32 per home. And again, we're not levying the tax this year. But the reason why we need to have a budget approved is that because we collected the $57,000 last year, we negotiated with the developer, and we understood that there was no construction imminent in the near future. And so we have nothing to maintain. They claimed that the funds should be refunded to them. We agreed to an extent. So we felt $28,838 would be the proper amount to return because we also had initial CFD origination costs that create the CFD that were going to be removed from this fund that we internally had to pay ourselves. The Sunridge CFD, this is near that area, covered costs of $21,928, so that's going to be reimbursed back to Sunridge. And then the general fund, we also had some internal expenses that we paid out of the general fund for $6,972. So that's how the $57,000 is going to be split, $28,000 back to the developer and $28,000 back to the funds that paid the bills to create the CFD. We will revisit this every year and figure out when construction is going to take place and start the tax levy prior to construction to build up reserves and have enough money to maintain for that first year and ongoing years. So that's why I'm bringing the Montalena CFD to this budget hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Caddell. At this time, I'd like to invite the public to comment if there is any. Hearing none, I would like to close this public hearing at 7:16. Are there any questions from the board? Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
I move the Board of Directors adopt Resolution 15/16-15 and approve the final budget for the Montalena Community Facility District, 347J, for the fiscal year 2015-16, and authorize the district administrator to file with the county auditor controller.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor by Director Yearwood. Do I hear a second? I have a second by Secretary Lineback. Roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Lineback?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Director Reyes is absent.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item E three J.
Thank you. The final, final adoption this evening for budgets is item J. It's adopt Resolution fifteen backslash sixteen dash sixteen and approve the final budgets for the Park Maintenance and Recreation Improvement Districts, District three four seven R for fiscal year two thousand fifteen sixteen, and authorize the district administrator to file with the county auditor controller.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing at seven eighteen. Mr. Caddell.
I'd like to appreciate everyone's patience. This is the final, final. He took my joke, but finance doesn't have many jokes. This fund was established in two thousand six for parks, facilities, and recreation programming. Pays for landscaping, maintenance, graffiti, security, and labor, and supplies, materials, and utility costs associated with such. There are many, many parks, twenty-two parks exactly that are located within the PMRID boundary. And comparison to our preliminary hearing, we originally had thirty-seven thousand three hundred eighty-two homes. We have added fifty-one homes for a total of thirty-seven thousand four hundred thirty-three this year that were able to be taxed at the rate of twenty-four dollars and fifty-six cents a year. So, that total revenue increased about thirteen hundred dollars, bringing it to eight hundred eighty-nine thousand four hundred. Our expenditures are a little bit more. They represent thirty percent of our total park services budget. Salaries at four eighty-eight, five oh six. Our service and supplies at five eighty-two, one fourteen, bringing a total of one million seventy thousand six twenty. Now, we are mandatory match for an economical benefit outside that area that we have to bring in at least a sixteen percent match. So, we do almost a twenty percent match from the general fund. That totals one hundred eighty-three thousand dollars and one hundred eighty-three thousand six hundred twenty dollars. So, those two combined balance out that budget.
Thank you, Mr. Caddell. At this time, I'd like to invite the public to comment, if there is any. Hearing none. I will be closing this public hearing at seven nineteen. Are there any questions from the board? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution fifteen slash sixteen dash sixteen and approve the final budget for the Park Maintenance and Recreation Improvement District, three forty seven R, for fiscal year two thousand fifteen sixteen, and authorize the district administrator to file with the county auditor controller.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor by Secretary Lineback. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second by Vice Chair Sloan. Roll call.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Lineback?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Director Reyes is absent.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item F. Regular calendar items.
Thank you, Chair Danzel and Board. We have three regular calendar items for you this evening. First one is item F one, which is to adopt Resolution fifteen backslash sixteen dash seventeen, approving annual tax report and levying a special tax within Community Facilities District number zero one dash zero one Villages of Zimfandel for fiscal year two thousand fifteen sixteen to finance certain public services in and for such, excuse me, in and for such Community Facilities District. With that, I don't think we excuse me. I'm getting to my items after the last long haul.
I understand. Page fifty-two, sir.
Thank you.
Page fifty-two?
Thank you.
Once again, you have the resolution and adoption in the background. As everyone knows, these are our regular engineers levying a special tax motions. I won't go through the analysis. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer those. And/or, we also have Joe Francisco here this evening to answer any questions you may have in regards to the to the report.
Are there any questions by the board? In this item? Any questions from the public? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion. I move that we adopt Resolution fifteen slash sixteen dash seventeen, approving annual tax report and levying a special tax within Community Facilities District number zero one dash, I mean, yeah, zero one dash zero one Villages of Zimfandel for fiscal year two thousand fifteen slash sixteen to finance certain public services in and for such Community Facility District.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor by Vice Chair Sloan. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Director Yearwood. Roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Lineback?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Director Reyes is absent.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item F two.
Yes, thank you, Chair Danzel. Item F two, along the similar lines, is to adopt Resolution fifteen backslash sixteen dash eighteen, approving the annual tax report and levying a special tax within the Community Facilities District number zero four zero one Sunridge for fiscal year two thousand fifteen sixteen to finance certain public services in and for such Community Facilities District.
Thank you. We all have the report.
Once again, along the same lines, this is the annual tax report for levying special tax in this CFD. Once again, Joe Francisco is here to answer any questions that you may have in regards to this report.
Thank you, Administrator Rhodes. Any questions from the board? Any cards from the public? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion?
I move the Board of Directors adopt Resolution fifteen slash sixteen dash eighteen, approving annual tax report and levying a special tax within the Community Facility District number zero four dash zero one Sunridge for fiscal year two thousand fifteen sixteen to finance certain public services in and for such Community Facility District.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor by Director Yearwood. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second by Vice Chair Sloan. Roll call vote, please.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Lineback?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Director Reyes is absent.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item F three.
Once again, item F three is a continuation of the annual tax reports. This is to adopt Resolution fifteen backslash sixteen dash nineteen, approving the annual tax report and not levying a special tax within the Community Facilities District number two zero one four dash zero one Montalena for fiscal year two thousand fifteen and sixteen. With that, once again, Mr. Caddell reviewed our situation with Montalena and the fact that although the district was able to establish the CFD, we have worked with the developer to not collect at this time and will monitor their progress as such time that we'll be able to collect prior to development. And with that, once again, Mr. Francisco is here to answer any questions you may have in regards to the report.
Thank you. Do I hear any questions by the board? Any cards from the public? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion?
I move the Board of Directors adopt Resolution fifteen slash sixteen dash nineteen, approving annual tax report and not levying a special tax within Community Facilities District number twenty fourteen dash oh one Montalena for fiscal year two thousand fifteen sixteen.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor by Secretary Lineback. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Director Yearwood. Roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Lineback?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Director Reyes is absent.
Thank you. Motion passes. At this time, there's a scheduled recess for administration purposes. Take a quick five-minute recess.